Ready? I'm going to call to order the Cochise County Board of Supervisors work session for Thursday, March 6, 2025. We are meeting in the Board of Supervisors hearing room at 1415 Melody Lane. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02, the public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors may attend in person or via phone or video internet conferencing, and members of the public may also attend in that manner. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss the agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken place at this meeting. Roll call, we'll start out with District 1. Crosby is your district 2. You on there?
She said, what's?
Excuse me, unmute.
Unmute, alright.
Am I there? Hello?
Yep, there you are, alright.
Alright, I'm here.
Alright. District 3, Antonius here. All three supervisors are present. Ms. Gomez is present via Microsoft Teams. Alright, let's start out with the items for discussion. We'll go to the county administrator, Ms. Gilman.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. We have meetings on Tuesday, March 11. The library, jail, and flood control district meetings will be only consent items listed for minutes and demands, so no action on any of those agendas. And then moving to the regular meeting for the board on the 11th, of course, we have our consent items, but I wanted to see if you had anything you wanted to discuss, their routine matters like the minutes and demands, but then we also have an appointment to the workforce development local investment board, which you heard from State of Belts last week, the board just approves appointments to that countywide board. And Ms. Kara Elkins is from Cochise College, she's their adult ed director, so it makes sense for her to be on that board. And the intergovernmental agreement for the state board of equalization, that's for them to have a hearing officer, so when we have tax appeals, their state board of equalization provides us a hearing officer to hear those tax appeals, and then the matter comes to the board to ratify or amend. So that IGA is an annual renewal. It has a term in it not to exceed 5,000 per year, and we typically spend less than 2,000 for that service. But all of that IGA and the appointment information will be on your, in Agenda Quick and attached to the agenda item.
Just let me know when you get to item number nine.
Okay. Any questions on the consent?
Nope.
Okay.
Alright.
Public hearing, we have, of course, water franchise, water services franchise, we practice state utility, the clerk and the county attorney's office will work on that matter, and they'll present.
Okay, they'll present, good, gotcha.
Yeah, it's a public hearing, but.
Since we have Mr. Correa with us with regard to the water services franchise, item number five, Mr. Correa, do we have language in there that says something like the taxpayers are going to get an automatic franchise fee if the legislature approves franchise fees? In other words, I want people to be able to vote on whether they pay a franchise fee or not, and I know that currently they are not allowed to have a franchise fee, even though we have franchises.
Right, currently, currently, there is no franchise fee, there's no mechanism in there.
Is your language in there saying that if the legislature creates a franchise fee, then, then all these customers just get it, or the board approves it and they get it without them having to vote on it?
There's no such language in any statute. We have some open-ended language to protect the county's interest. How that might happen in the future is not a known, known as done.
Against it, because I don't want people to be, have a tax implemented on them without them knowing it or having a chance to vote against it. I'm against that.
You remember Daniel Rome's notes, you remember Donald Rome's notes, the unknowns? This is a provision, because these are 25-year-long contracts to say, if there's a statute in the future that allows for, let's say, the county to charge the franchise company some sort of fee that makes sense, that we reserve that right. It doesn't mean that the board in the future would vote for it, but it's a protection.
I don't want that language in there, because I don't want future boards to vote for it either. I want the people that are going to get taxed to decide whether they want to have that fee or not.
Yeah, I understand that.
So if you could either present that or remove that from the language, so I can either vote for it, for it or against it, based on that, I would appreciate that very much, because there, there is no requirement to have a franchise fee, whether it's approved by the legislature or not, we're still not required to have a franchise fee. So even if, I mean, that's the way it was in the city. The city implemented a franchise fee or had a ballot issue on it, and so all that kind of stuff should be voted on, people should get taxed based on what they, what they approve to be taxed on, I think.
I agree, and I think the language is open-ended enough that a future board, dealing with a future statute.
I don't want future boards to be able to do that.
I have no doubt.
I want future boards to also have to take it before the voters, that the customers there, because this is obviously a pass-through tax. A franchise fee is a pass-through tax on the customers, right? So who, who gets the fee? The county would, if it was approved. So we would, we would charge them a franchise fee?
Sure, we have no idea what the, the future might hold. And these are, because they are long contracts with, you know, 25-year terms, we have open-ended language that is there to protect future county taxpayers and, you know, allow the board to make future decisions based on how the changes.
But taxpayers on the ground. And it'll, it'll just be on some consent agenda thing like, like what we're looking at today, it's just no good.
That, that's not necessarily the case.
Well, it might be the case, and I don't want that to might be the case. I want to prevent it. We'll look it over, that's a good point, I got it here. Liquor store, number six.
Yep, so that'll be a public hearing, if anyone opposes that liquor license application, they can come and speak to the board, and the information will be presented by the clerk as to all fees and everything paid.
Mustang Mall, 191.
That's.
In my backyard. Yeah.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah.
Can you guys scroll down on your, the agenda items? Yeah, can you scroll down so I can know where you guys are?
Yep, we can change the view there.
Cool, thank you.
Number six.
Six, so we talked about that.
There we go.
And then, oh Supervisor Gomez, number seven is the community enhancement fund expenditure for District 2. Actually, in speaking with our public works director, Jason Fazio, we determined that this is something that solid waste can handle internally and through their own funding, we don't need to do a community enhancement, so if you're okay, we'll remove that from the agenda.
Oh yeah, that's great, perfect, but they'll get the cleanup, right? They'll get the truck and everything anyway.
They'll, they'll be able to do everything, it just doesn't have to go through this mechanism.
Okay, great.
Sell more property.
Yep.
That's good.
Sell more property.
Good, good job, treasure.
And then number nine, this is the Stone Garden grant that Supervisor Crosby, you said you had some items you want to.
Sure, I'd be glad to hear from Mr. Foster first, if you had any comments, sir.
What, what do you think that the board is looking for as far as comments?
Well, I wanted to say, first of all, that I looked at all the information that was on, on Agenda Quick, and it did thoroughly address, in my opinion, the issue of the EREs or employee-related expenses. And I appreciate that, and so nonetheless, I want to point out to my colleagues that that does not cover unfunded pension liabilities. EREs do not cover unfunded pension liabilities. So that's a, that's a, you know.
That you are correct.
For you guys.
It does not, it does not cover the unfunded, but it does cover the current, what, what over time they are working, that ERE does cover that, that overtime funding that they are working.
Okay. Did you have anything else to?
I don't have anything else to offer unless you, unless you all have some questions of me, sir.
So you don't, you don't know anything about the, just this little related board security, the governor's border task force thing that she just did?
I don't have any knowledge of that.
Okay, I was just curious, I was just reading.
It's a surprise to the. I know that Sheriff has one of the, I think, believe Commander Watkins working to understand and to provide some support for that task force, when and if that comes together and we get tasked to work with that.
Really funny, all four border sheriffs in the paper I was reading this morning said, but before she said that we were a sanctuary state, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, yeah. So it was clear. But I was just curious, and, and the two Democrat sheriffs, right? So you had the Pima and the San Cruz sheriff were both like.
The first I heard of it was in a meeting yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, so, so she said that she had, she had shopped this around and, you know, it's like, you know, but.
As she may have, I'm not, I'm a little on the total poll to be in those meetings. Yeah, I'm a little on the total poll to be in those meetings. Yesterday was the first I heard.
So this, the Stone Grant, the Stone Garden is just carrying us through till March of next year, right? That's it?
It's a recurring grant every year, sir, so every year you'll see, this will be the last year you see me, I'm retiring.
I'm familiar with it, because we started this back in 2010, 2011 was when this started.
Been around for a long time.
Yeah, we, we did it a long time ago, so, so I'm, I'm just wondering what's going to happen now with everything that's going on, since the border crossings in Arizona are now almost in the 800, 800 to 900.
From my understanding, how this grant works, I've been doing this since 2013, it's not only for illegal immigration, but it's for legal drug smuggling. So what I would like to see happen is that the focus, if, you know, the immigrant, the illegal immigrant crossings are going down, and we keep them down, that we focus on the drug smuggling. So I believe that this grant is going to continue to go on, they'll just do more focusing on the drug smuggling portion of it.
Okay, alright, well, good, alright, sir.
Other comments about it, first of all, it, it's from FEMA, it originates from FEMA, and FEMA, there's no telling what's going to happen.
It's going to get dogged.
Well, it's likely, so it, it might not ever come before us again, we don't know, but FEMA is basically, you know, fundamentally not for year after year things like what we see here, it's for, okay, so here, and we're going to pour out a bunch of money, and, and then next year we don't expect a hurricane in the exact same place. So that made some problems with, with the whole funding mechanism, as I understand, I've been looking at it since 2021 at least.
Yes.
So besides that, I also had provided for my, my colleagues viewing pleasure, the minutes from 2021 where this same came up again, it started at number eight, County Sheriff, and so we have Mr. Ken Foster still presenting for it, and on the next page, I wanted to point out the, that, that the discussion at that time was to place the, the administration of the grant under county finance or under the same building here that we have. So I think that that is a good idea, and I think all of the sheriff's department should be, the finance should be looked at in this building with our finance department, even if the sheriff, for instance, hires his own finance person and so on and so forth, just for the, just for our authority under 11251, which is look at everybody's finances, and all the departments, it all should be centralized, in my opinion. So if you would care to look at this, where it says, all this whole discussion is about transferring administration of the grant to the finance department, and the reason for it, you could look at the, the, the video from that time, from the meeting in 2021. I don't think that anything is different now than it was then, and so if we decided to put the transfer, transfer the administration of this grant to the finance department in 2021, it's probably good, yeah, that we should do it also again now, as well as the whole sheriff's budget. And I've talked about our review of the whole sheriff's budget, the whole jail, jail budget, when we continue to go forward on the jail.
That concludes my comments. Fine. Item number eight, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks. Well, that was nine, right?
That was.
Nine. Development Services, review or firm modifier versus decision to hearing officer regarding zoning, Houston pursuant to Mr. Jason Houston, District 3. What was, what was that about?
The information, so I would say we should treat this similar to a public hearing in terms of how we could discuss it today. There is a zoning violation for this resident on, related to his, the site view of his property with a stop sign and the site view as cars approach, there's obstruction. So he's appealing that zoning violation, and there's, there'll be additional information attached to the agenda item for the board to review, pictures and.
Who's, who's going to brief that?
Mr. Coxworth.
Foxworth will do it, okay. Alright.
And, and that's, that's in the area of District 3, related to the west end of Sierra Bust.
Okay.
And Emergency Services, Dan Duchan is here to, the Director of Emergency Management, to discuss this item, it's the interfund transfer of 15,000 from the Emergency Management General Fund Budget to the grant fund budget, so the board has to approve interfund transfers when we go from the general fund to a grant fund. And if you have questions as to why that need is necessary, he's here to.
Yeah, come on, come on up and, so what's the Community Wildlife Project, Protection Plan Project, what is it?
Yes, good morning, Daniel Duchan, Emergency Management Director. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is a plan with about a 10-year timeframe where we partner and work with all the land management agencies in the county, so for example, Forest Service, BLM, State Fire, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and private property owners and all the fire districts and fire departments, and we look at the, the plan looks at areas in the county where there's a high wildfire risk, we look at projects that could be done in, in those areas.
You pre-poll water or something out there?
I'm sorry?
You pre-position water for, for, in tanks for access if there's a fire in the area, or what is it, what do you do with, that's what I'm getting at?
So the plan is, it lists projects that can be completed by the individual land management agency, but it brings all the partners together to look and, look and evaluate our risk, so we talk about communities like Portal, Banning Creek, Old Bisbee, the west side of the Ochukas, we take information from Development Services to see how that wildland urban interface has changed, use GIS and satellite data to review, has the tree coverage changed, the type of trees, we reevaluate the risk and hazards every 10 years, so it's, it's the plan I'm here.
So it doesn't do anything, it's just paper generating?
Well, it, it, correct, there are no projects, we build the plan, and then with this information, each land management agency can better direct their infrastructure projects, their clearing projects.
So who's given us the 150K?
It comes from.
No, no, 150K, it's a match, 10% match, who's?
Is a grant from the US Department of Agriculture, it's passed through to State Fire, and then down to Cochise County.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Correa, I have a concern that we will not be confirming the existence of the sprinka by taking this money, which is the BLM, and so I, I can't remember what the, the exact food chain is in the Department of Interior between the BLM and the Department of Agriculture, but this is not coming from the BLM.
Correct, this is coming from USDA.
Okay, and so in, in your view, what is the overall relationship of the county with the BLM regarding the sprinka as it applies to this money, if any?
So I don't believe there's a relationship between the plan and the sprinka. Once the plan, we begin working on it, we'll invite the BLM to participate as a land management agency in the, in the county.
What other land would we be inviting them to participate with regard to besides the sprinka? If you could get that off the top of your head, that's the only one I could think of, but I'm sure that there's other.
Other agencies?
No, BLM land within the county besides the sprinka.
So the BLM owns, I believe it's the Gila District here, which is primarily, again, in the San Pedro, and they'll be invited to participate for all the land they represent. There's also checkerboard parcels of BLM land all over.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, we already talked about this one, the lease grant for the U of A down at, in the room, I think Supervisor Gomez had a issue she raised on that, I don't know whether it was resolved or not.
Yeah, so I did speak with them, they do have people that are in the building as part of this lease, it's not just a storage area, they have, they have three people that work.
Well, I, I've been down there, you know, I've been, I, I've been in the office, because I'm going on Fridays and Mondays, and I haven't seen anyone, so I would love for them to, you know, because I go down there and then lobby and I'm checking it out, and I haven't seen anyone, so maybe I'll just ask them to come by and say hello or something like that, so that I get to meet them and see that they're there, because right now all I see is a storage unit.
Sounds good, yeah, I, I asked them this week on that, and they said they have three people that work out of the office, they're not stationed in the office all the time, but they work in and out of the office, but I will convey that to them as well.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, 13.
Oh, so this is the family self-sufficiency grant, Anita Baca, she's unable to be here today, she is online, if you have questions regarding this, it's this amount of $80,000 that comes to the housing authority from HUD.
Self-sufficiency.
So, yeah, that, that program, I'm going to ask Anita if she can speak a little bit about it, I could probably go into a very broad strokes, but I believe it's a grant program that helps people, once they've reached the ability to have a job and, and move their families away from other types of assistance.
If Ms. Baca is available, I have a question for.
Good morning.
There you go.
Mr. Crosby?
There you are, okay, I would like to know what collaboration the county does with various veterans groups, with, with, with veteran housing and this grant. I saw the, the reference to veterans in the, the Agenda Quick material, would you care to go over it for my colleagues?
Sure, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I apologize, I couldn't be there in person today. This grant pays specifically for salary and EREs for people who work on the family self-sufficiency program in our department. So what it's designed for is when our staff notice somebody participating in one of our rental subsidy programs, which includes, which includes HUD-VASH, what you referred to earlier, that are receiving zero to, very little income, but they're in the position where they can improve their income. We, we reach out to them, the, the case manager, the coordinator, the FSS coordinator will reach out to them to see if they would like to participate in this program, and together the participant and the program coordinator come up with, with a roadmap to self-sufficiency, and typically the, the contract is a five-year contract, but the participants can graduate early, but this program has helped people graduate from college, start their own businesses, buy their own homes, a variety of things, it depends on what the participant sees for their self-sufficiency and what they would like to do to obtain self-sufficiency, so it gets them, it is designed to not only get them off of housing subsidy, but also general assistance through the state.
Okay, and do you have any idea what percentage of that might go to assist veterans and veteran organization collaboration that your department might do?
It is as needed. Honestly, veterans have a lower need for this, because most of the veterans that are referred to us from the VA, because we, we do work very closely with, with the VA on all of our programs, but specifically our HUD-VASH program, we have just under 100 vouchers that serve veterans specifically, and, but the majority of the veterans on our programs are receiving some sort of income already. But if they're in the position where they can improve that income, then, then they participate in the program. But if you would like, I can bring some more, some more detailed numbers for you regarding a veteran breakout for Tuesday's meeting.
That would be wonderful, Ms. Baca, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Ms. Baca, can you tell me, where do most of these funds go to? Does it go to Douglas, does it go to, you know, the Alphita area, or can, do you have any idea?
These funds don't go to anyone. These funds pay for the staff to get.
Okay.
Who are already participating on Section 8 or HUD-VASH into, also the emergency housing voucher program. So, so most of our voucher-based programs are eligible for this program, and this is specifically for salary and EREs for the staff to pay for the case management to get folks from subsidized housing to, to non-subsidized housing.
About how many staff do you think that this helps?
It, it pays for one full-time coordinator, and it also allowable costs are a small percentage that comes out of the, the supervisor and myself, out of our salaries as well, but it's a small percentage, we don't have to spend, the supervisor and I don't, don't spend an inordinate amount of time on this, it's, it's mostly the coordinator spends pretty close to about 90% of her time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
See you, see you next week. Alright, then federal and state legislation, there's a whole bunch, on the resolution, on the referral to the ballot for Friday, early ballot returns, how's that looking?
We sent it over to the county attorney's office for review and formatting, and so it should be on the next meeting in March.
Mr. Chair, would you care to review that with me, because I'm not positive about what you're talking about.
Oh, it, it is, it's basically, the legislature's referring to the ballot, the requirement to mail in your ballots by the Friday prior to Election Day, and then after that, if you bring your early ballot to the polls, you swap it for a ballot to vote in person.
I see.
So that it'll, it'll reduce the signature verification requirement time.
Okay.
For those, those ballots, the, the county recorder will be able to, by, receiving it by Friday, over the weekend and on Monday, be able to verify those signatures, so that those ballots that were received by the Friday prior will be able to go into the stack for counting on Election Day, and they won't have to spend three days, four days going through verifying signatures that were dropped off at the polls on Election Day, delaying the results. So it's going to expedite the results being done by giving the county recorder time to verify signature and not having to verify the signatures of those ballots dropped off on Election Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I remember that that process was called a bottleneck by our outgoing.
Right, 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 so hopefully that, that will avoid that. The governor vetoed the bill, so the legislature is going to put it on the ballot, so the resolution is supporting putting that on the ballot. We would vote on that, to vote for us, to, to send to.
Resolution.
Yeah, to send the legislature in, in support of that concept of having mail-in ballots received by Friday prior, that's all it is.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
So, and then still battling the water bill. That's, that's another, another impact to us because that bill takes away our authority to do zoning, which is a big hit to us. We wouldn't have any authority to regulate any building projects or zoning or anything in this county if that version that she's pushing goes through. And then I can't think of any, any other off the top of my head right now, but we'll, we'll talk about more of that. I do want to throw something out. One of the things, you know, I talked with a few other folks about moving the board meetings to local areas for just one every other month. But I'd like to get a, an agenda item to talk about that at a work session.
Okay.
To where, for example, we'll start out with one. So you would be able to say, okay, we're going to have this meeting in Sierra Vista at the Sierra Vista Town Hall, City Hall, right? And then District Two would then go to Ms. Gomez and then she would say, okay, for this meeting, I want to have this meeting in Tombstone or in Douglas, you know, and that'll way, there's a lot of people that can't come all the way to Bisbee. So it one, it's one every other month, so it'll be every fourth board meeting, right?
I don't have any problem with it. I have a question.
Sure.
Did we just move to agenda item number two?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we?
I guess we did. About future topics and others.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. So, yeah, that's why I, I was done with this. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I was reading that too. We're sitting here reading. But I mean, that, that's kind of what, you know, I'd like to just see. So it's, so for example, we would do three meetings here. So like, let's just say for upcoming April, right? So we do April, both meetings would be here, May, the first meeting would be here, and then the next meeting at the end of May would be in District One, in Mr. Crosby's district. And then all of June would be here, and then the first meeting of July would be here, and then the last meeting in July would be in District Two. And so it'd be like every two months, one meeting would be the local, local board meeting.
Mr. Casey, you wouldn't have any problem just take all this electronic stuff wherever we go, right? Put that as a note to figure out, do that item.
Well, some of them may have it. Some, that's what I'm saying. If we do it in like city halls, you know, they may have that capability there, you know? So, so and then remind them all that we have IGAs that are involved with all of them too, just to, just to let them know. But I mean, that way they're, you know, and if I want to do one in Benson, right? So we'll do, do one in Benson or do one in Wilcox or whatever. But it'll be only one meeting every two months, you know? And then if, and in the evening, that's the other thing.
In the evening?
Yeah, in the evening. So like at, at five or 5:30 or something like that. And that way there, the staff that's associated with that meeting could come in late that day, sleep in in the morning.
Giving a little care out there.
Yeah, yeah. Sleep in, sleep in that morning and then take a cool nonchalant drive to the, the meeting location and then attend the meeting and if they, if they're on the agenda, I'm just saying that's, 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 you know, and then, but I.
We could look at that. I guess off the top of my head, I would want to make sure we're publicizing it appropriately.
Right, just, that's what I'm saying. Just a work session to talk about it.
Yeah.
And what the logistics are, if it's doable, not doable, like, you know, either way, but just to, just to talk about that because several, several people have told me they would like to come to the meetings in person and they want to know why we don't rotate them throughout the county. So I said, we'll take a look at it and see, see what it entails and, and whatnot.
We can prepare some information for you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just so, so I know, I know, you know, especially with Ms. Gomez and I have very large districts that, you know, people, like it takes me an hour to get here from my map and then somebody from San Simone just ain't coming.
Right.
You know, from San Simone. And then same thing with our portal folks, you know? But a lot of them would like to be in person. A lot of them would like to be in person. I mean, I heard it from several people that said they would like to be able. And the other problem is they said even doing it by internet, the fact that we do these at 10 o'clock in the morning on a workday, a lot of them are working and they can't get on, so they would like one time every so often where they can go to a meeting in the evening. We may even have people at those meetings at five o'clock that come from halfway across the county because it's after, after five and they can get there after work, you know, and, and attend the meeting in person too. So it's just something to look at more.
It's been done before.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and not with the electronic stuff. That was when they were just taking minutes by hand.
Yeah, and several people have asked me why we don't do the official meetings at 5:30. A lot of the city councils do their meetings at 5:30 and they were asking, and even some of the other counties do their recent meetings at 5:30. So we could talk about that. But if we do, I think we do one every two months that might scratch the itch, so to speak. All right, so next item, you want to go over one, Mr. Crosby?
Certainly. Let's take a look at the, the PEGI paper.
Oh, PEGI paper, yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm painfully aware of this. I got, I got the history on this. I don't know if Ms. Gomez does, but it's not a good one on how this fund has been, been funded. We were just talking about it. Maybe we do another resolution and say instead of giving everybody $15 million to spend any really nearly way they want, how about if we solve this pension problem?
Well, that's, that's, in my opinion, what should have been done before anybody thought anything about a jail, anything is, is take care of this because, because the combined, we'll look at that, this in a second off of this other package that I gave you. But Ms., can you take a look at this, Laura, if we could look at this, says PVI under the microscope and, and what it shows is the next one place, double-digit hits.
Yeah.
In the red in 2001, 2002, 2008, 2009. So it isn't as if it's guaranteed that we're always going to get 3% or better every year or you could get creamed. So, and, and the next slide in the middle of this one says, good intentions gone bad, helping rural and retirees. And I'm sure that our predecessors on the Board of Supervisors said, oh, this is going to be the answer to all our problems. We sign into this PSPRS thing and everybody's retirement is just going to be, just going to be wonderful. And, you know, 30 years later, it's not wonderful. It's real terrible all, all across the state. And I pointed that out. It isn't just the, the, it isn't just Cochise County. There's places that are worse off than us and we'll talk about that. If we could go to the next slide, which, which looks like this, a couple like quasi-bill per graph. Okay, so I would like to get this updated by our finance director, if you'd be so kind. And I would like that to include one of these charts that has the combined PSPRS liabilities in my case for Sierra Vista and the, the county, which is, which at last, my last count was already 80 million, okay? So if it, the, the point of this graph is the, the lower the rate of the return, the higher the debt. The blue line is, is the worst-case scenario and that is at, 5.3% is the worst-case scenario represented by this, by this graph. And as we saw in a couple of previous slides, if we're in the negatives, oh man, it's, it's just going to be way off the charts how, how bad this problem is going to be. And this is one of those things that everybody's kicking the can, kicking the can, all the state's going to bail this out. And my colleague, Mr. Antonori, talked about, oh, what we need here is the state to just come in and give, give everybody a billion dollars and, and fix all this, okay? And the problem is that, go ahead and go to the next slide. And we've got these, these responsible municipalities like Benson and Wilcox, your guys.
Yeah.
That their PSPRS liability is very, very low.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you look at Sierra Vista or Bisbee, they're, they're, they're pretty much upside down in, with regard to their PSPRS liability and their total budget until they refinance their, their PSPRS liability, which I think is a terrible idea. That's just another version of kicking the can and, and dumping this on our great grandchildren or something like that. So that's the point there. And let's see what else I got here.
What you're saying is if we were to get the state to help, the guys that have been doing it right are going to get punished.
Yes, yes, that's the point I was going to make. Okay, the more irresponsible that your, your elected official, the more reward you get.
Right.
Okay, and I don't think that's a, a precedent set. And so, so that, that brings up really the, that, the inherent problem with any kind of quote bailout, you're going to do this PSPRS system and how are you going to administrate it so that it's anything like fair? You know, and, and so, I mean, the people at Bisbee and Douglas, they're going to want, hey, we want, we want the gravy train here. The people in, in Benson and Wilcox are going to say, look, we've been responsible. How, how come we're not getting as much money as, as Bisbee and Wilcox, or I should say Bisbee and Douglas? So it is a problem that has to get fixed. Okay, the next one has something bond-ish. There you go. Thank you so much. Just, thank you so much, Mike. Okay, now this has to do with, with bonds and, and indebtedness per the, the total county property tax valuation. And it's interesting and you can look it up in 11271, but the point that I would like, like to make is it doesn't matter whether it's property tax, in this case, it doesn't matter if it's property tax or a sales tax, people are still paying it. And so the, the restriction that is, I, I think it's 6% or something like that, that you can't exceed 6% of the total property valuation or something like that. It shouldn't really matter whether, whether you're talking about property tax or, or a sales tax because it's still coming out of everybody's pocket one way or another. Okay, so next, I think that what I wanted to talk about over the very last page where it says, some of our municipalities are clearly in weaker financial position than the others. What I floated back when I made these things is having, having differing property tax rates whether they were, whether a citizen was in a municipality was with its very own PSPRS issues, problems and so on and so forth. Because at that time, some of my colleagues wanted to raise property tax, which I think we staved off then, we staved it off until my last year. And then, and then my, my outgoing colleagues were outgoing and they didn't care if they were going to raise property tax or not, so they did. So that, that concludes that. Now let's take a look at a bit of this package of stuff and you don't have, you don't have slides of this, but amortization schedule. And what we're looking at here is for 100, the first page is that for $150,000 of principal, we're paying 100, I should say 150 million, okay? So let me correct myself. Add three zeros to all of these figures and you get millions instead of thousands. So this came from a mortgage website and so the, the figures, though they take up less space for one thing, but it, it was more in terms of household prices, okay? But if you convert everything to millions instead of thousands, you get the idea. So for $150 million in principal, we'd be paying 116 million in, in interest. And I, I don't think, that's very good. Next, flip that page over, that was for an interval.
5%.
5%, 25 years.
Yeah.
So if we, okay, well, we're only going to go 75 million, okay? All right, so for 75 million in principal, we'd be paying 45 million in interest, which I consider to be the height of irresponsibility and we should not do that. Even though, even though some bond origination company is going to come along just like they did for PSPRS, it's like, this is the wonderful thing to do.
Bond, bond rates are going to be 11%. So it's going to be worse.
Way worse, okay. And then, and then the other thing is earnings. And, and so the next one is bond projections. And this is something our friend, Mr. DeShawn created. If you care to, to talk about this, I don't want to talk about this. Okay, but that was in his previous life, okay? So don't forget about this, but this came from the, the document that I have titled, DeShawn Antonori document, as I recall, which had, had your plan for the jail district and Mr. DeShawn's very, very concise figures having to do with the, the possibility of jail, jail funding. The next one is called debt market instability. I got this today and we're talking about, we don't want to see debt market instability. We want to see debt market stability, okay? Because this is, this is the 10-year yield on US Treasury bonds. That's what we're talking about. So anytime we're talking about debt market instability, it's bad for everybody. Okay, flip the page and this is slightly out of date, if I'm not mistaken, it's from, from June of '23 or July of '23. And it is, uh, uh-oh, it got cut off. That, that's okay, okay. Inverted yield curve. And so what this means is people are more, the, the lenders are more inclined or will give you a better rate of interest on something short-term than they will for something long-term. That means they have more faith in the economic system in the short-term than they do in the long-term and that's not a good sign. And this isn't something that we're making up.
No, I'm very familiar.
The market economics of, of the whole money thing. So I'm almost, I might just be done. Debt market instability, let's see what else I got.
Yeah, I, I don't have any desire to bond to pay attention. It's just like borrowing money to borrow.
Okay, how about a jail?
Well, jails, you know, I, I got you.
Paygo.
I, just kidding, we won't be able to build a jail for nine years if you do.
Fix what we got while we're saving up paygo. That, that's what I would recommend.
Well, so again, what we do in the world that I live in, we do a cost benefit analysis and a time value of money analysis, right? So you want to know, okay, if we were to build a jail now and get it done and built, right? And get it so off the table, we're just paying the interest on the bond, right? Or if we put the jail off for 10 years, what's the impact of maintenance to keep the whole jail up? And then, you know, the, you know, there's, there's, there's a cost to that and the inflation now creeps into the factor. And so you end up actually, you actually end up over time, if you do time value money, you actually end up over time paying a lot more money in the long run if you do it that way. Sometimes it's better, because that's what we do. We, sometimes I, I have a capital buy, I need to grow up. We look at it, what's the time value of money on that? Well, this is this, the inflation curve, this is the, the delay to production, it's going to cost us more to produce it because we don't have this equipment. So it's better to just eat it, go out, borrow the money, make the capital investment and you make it back over time. So that's the analysis that has to have, you know, it may be better to, to bond or you may, it may show that, you know, maybe it is better to pay as you don't.
I have to say that until you tour that hot, that jail, there's no way you can say that you can send it down another 10 years. It is despicable. Everyone that was in authority to see it before us should be ashamed of themselves. There's no way that you can continue that jail the way it is. It's going to take too much money to fix it and everybody's in danger, you know, whether you might have water suppression, but you don't have a fire alarm, you don't have doors that open, cameras don't work, you got sewage up in the kitchen. There's just no way that you can take that jail and push it down another 10 years because I have nightmares, somebody is going to, you know, there's a fire and they're all going to die and then what, what kind of liability? We're not going to have any money to do anything with. So until you see and tour that jail, then I want you to come back to me and say you can push it down another 10 years.
It, it's, it's again, she's talking about a cost benefit analysis. That's exactly what she's talking about. So there's, there is a cost associated with not building it for 10 years. I mean, you think you're saving money, but in actuality, you're, you're, you're probably spending a lot more, but we don't know that. I'm just, I'm assuming that that would be the case.
How did it get as deteriorated as it is since 2013?
There is a national systemic issue with sheriff's departments allowing their jails to degrade. That is, that is something that maybe we need to address as we go forward this new, new jail to establish.
I'm not suggesting that it shouldn't be brought up to standards.
No, no, I, what I'm.
And I hope Ms. Gomez understands it.
Right. What I'm getting at is what, what, what tends to happen is jails are more of a, just a, I gotta do it thing and it's not cool. Jails aren't cool, right? What's cool is, you know, helicopters and SWAT vans and, you know, door kicking and hunting down guys, you know, in the street that, you know, killed some poor guy and, you know, getting, that's the cool guy shit, the sheriffs, oh, sorry, cool guy stuff that sheriffs like to do, right? They like to put the money towards that and what suffers is the jail because the jail is, you know, it's the jail, you know? So that happens nationally. Hundreds of sheriff's departments for some reason benign neglect their, their jail. So if we build this new jail, one of the things we need to do is to establish the maintenance schedule for that and make sure it's properly maintained, map that out, say every six months this gets done, every six months that gets done. That, that's part of the thing so that it doesn't happen again, so that we have a detailed maintenance support plan. That, that's, that's what I'm getting at, but. That, that's, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, but what, what you're getting at is the pay-as-you-go model almost always never works.
Well, I'm not saying get all the money, but what I'm saying is, as you, as you are aware, and as we talked to you, the interest is front loaded on, on any amortization schedule. And so, the more you paygo, the better off you're gonna be.
True.
And I'm not saying don't maintain it, we should go in there, fix everything as fast as we can.
You're gonna get a little bit of paygo as we wait for this construction project to begin. You're, you're compiling money now, right? So we're like, what, 11 million bucks now, sitting roughly somewhere in there? And it's, it's continuing, by the time this kicks off, you'll probably have 16, 17 million sitting in there, ready to go. You'll have the grants, if the sheriff pulls in the 40 million, and we got the other 20 million from the state. You know, all that helps keep down that principal, and then once, what's that?
Keeps down the interest.
Well, you want the principal amount to be low, because then that translates to your interest payment. But then, you pay accelerated payments, like I did with my house. I took out a 30-year mortgage on my house, but I paid it off in nine years, right? How do you do that? You just pay extra every month to what you can afford, whatever money in your budget's left over at the end of the month, you pay it towards your, your mortgage. So we would do the same thing, whatever revenue that sales tax generates, right? Anything above that principal and interest payment, it doesn't matter, we pay towards that bond, and we just accelerate the payment. That's right, if we got a 10-year bond, conceivably, you could pay it off in seven years. That's, that's the point I'm getting at. I, I mean, so that time value of money analysis is something we should probably, you know, talk to Chin about and.
And that brings me to the next meeting we'll have on the 11th at 1 o'clock, is the Chin Planning Study. Jail planning study, the folks from Chin Planning and DLR will be here to present where they are so far in the study. It's about the halfway point and give you some.
It allows us to recalibrate her compass to the direction that the board, the new board, the new board would like to, to go as well, because the previous guidance she has, that she's currently tracking on, is not, in my opinion, 100% of what I'm looking for.
Okay, that'll be a discussion then.
Yeah, I think, I think so too. So I mean, that's, that's kinda where that's going, but I'm, I mean, to your point, Mr. Crosby, you're, you're, you are correct that there's gotta be some, and we have to look at, we have to, it would, it would be irresponsible not to take a look at it.
Ms. Gomez, are you satisfied that you understand my perspective?
Yeah, I do understand your perspective, but I also think of the, the whole issue of the people that are in the jail. If I remember right, Karwaska said that 2% of the people in the jail are scary people you want off the street. The rest are people with financial problems, you know, drug addiction, just the mental health cells are deplorable. So I understand what you're saying, but I think you need to go and see it to really understand how bad it is. And I know that at nighttime, I pray every night that nothing happens.
So I'm, I'm familiar with it as well. So I, again, time value of money is a big thing when you go pay as you go, because even though you think you're gonna pay as you go, what happens is costs increase over time, and then you have other cost impacts that occur from not getting it done now, that you have to seriously look at, you gotta add a dollar value to that. So what would be that cost? I, I don't know. I mean, but I have the conceiv-, based on past experience, it never works out to pay as you go. For some crazy reason, every time you do the, the, the graph on that, over time, over a 15-year period, you end up losing money, or, or costs you more to delay the project. It's better to get the project done upfront and get it done, and then reap the, what would be the gain benefit for that. Now, that's private industry, there's profits, there's all sorts, but it's not much dissimilar from government, because we're talking about shareholders too, which are taxpayers, right? So your point is well taken, that interest, what's that?
And bondholders.
And bondholders, but I mean, your, your, your taxpayers are, are shareholders, right? And we're here to, to protect our shareholders and make sure they get their, their value for their investment in the county.
Because a bond means they're in bondage.
Yeah, the bondage, yeah.
You can put it on the private, something like that.
Well, well, I, I just, I just think it's something to look at. And again, I think we, we bring this up with Chin and say, hey, what, what happens if we, you know, pay, is there a way to phase it? To pay as you go, that's an option, right? Say, let's do the land acquisition, pay for that.
So if it's gonna be natural, as you said.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, here's, here, look, under my thumb here, if, if you, if you pay, paygoed two years, you'd be saving 15 million on it.
No, that's not true, though. Well, and yet, okay, I'm, on the interest, you're right. But I'm saying, but you're, now you're gonna incur costs for maintenance, you're gonna incur all the, all the cost savings. I'll give you, I'm just saying, for example, when, when I was on the board, that you put me on to, for the Citizen Advisor Board, looking at that heat map for where all the driving and all the, the logistics, the, the half million dollars a year we could save, just, just right there alone, $500,000 a year, just by putting a jail in a more efficient spot. You lose that if you pay as you go, because you're still gonna lose that efficiency, that inefficiency is gonna be there. So you're gonna have inefficiencies over this period you're gonna be paying for, that you could have recovered that. There's also the efficiency of building this jail in a way where you don't have the manpower requirements to, to, to run a new jail. You lose that money that, that is gone now, that you could have saved from creating efficiencies by designing this jail in a certain way. You lose efficiencies with regard to, you know, deputies driving guys to the hospital, and to jails, and to prisons, and all that stuff, depending on where this jail is placed. All those efficiencies are lost, so that's the, the cost benefit analysis that needs to be done. You could, you could actually be shooting yourself in the foot to save 75, 75 million dollars or whatever, over whatever years. You could lose more than that inefficiencies by not building a jail. Or not, or not, or not, you're right, because nobody's looked at it.
Ms. Gomez.
Yeah.
But just on that whole issue of the way the food is delivered, you know, they can't cook in the kitchen because the sewage comes up when there's, you know, issues with the water, and they can't deliver the food up the ramp, so, because the truck can't fit into that area where they deliver the food. So you're, there's another cost efficiency of, she has to bring the food already cooked into the jail, and then they have to walk it up. So there's a lot of those little things that add up.
No, I mean, you, you can figure that out. I mean, I did, just the driving one was basically how many miles per year they're currently driving. And if you move the jail to, let's just say, another location that was closer to like 90 or I-10 or something like that, the reduction in mileage and time, you know, you know what the deputies get paid, you know what the mileage and the cost is to the fleet for gas? We figured it out, it was like a half a million bucks.
And then you got the whole issue.
Just by putting the jail in the right place, you could say, logistically, just in, in time and gas, you know, so.
And that's a whole nother issue. That's a whole nother issue where you put it too.
No, I know, I got you, but I'm just saying, I, I did a heat map on Excel to just kinda calculate, just to see for, for, God, I can't say the word I wanna do, something in giggles, right? Just, just to, just to, just to, just to see what it was, as an example, right? Just, it was just say, see, if we put it here, you reduce the mileage by like 13,000 miles a year, by putting it in a different spot. And, and that equates to how many hours does it take, you know, that's a minute a mile, you know, 13,000 minutes equals this many hours of time that the deputies aren't hauling these guys around. I mean, that cost, that, no one has done it, that's what I'm saying, that's the point. If you look at that savings, we could be actually saving the taxpayers' money over time by getting the jail built and done and getting it over with.
I would, the chair's points are well taken, I am in possession of your report, and I will provide it to anybody that wants it.
Yeah.
It's very good.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
It was the only one, actually.
But I mean, I, I just, I have learned over the last 20 years that sometimes penny wise can end up being pound foolish, right? You may think, I'm saving money here, and you, and I've seen it where the downstream effect ends up costing three times as much as what you saved. That's all I'm saying, and I've seen it at the legislature, I've seen it in the private sector, I've seen it where we think, oh yeah, we're gonna do this, we're gonna save this money by doing this right now, and you end up paying more over time because you did. That's, we have to look at that, but we owe that to the taxpayers. So when we meet with Chin, we'll bring that up with her and say, hey, we wanna look at, is there a way she can do a CBA? Or do we need to bring somebody else in to do a CBA and see what that, that impact is?
Ms. Gomez's comments are also well taken, we must be primarily focused on protecting the rights of people that are, well, protecting justice.
Innocent, totally guilty.
Yeah, the people that are, people that, that we have deprived of their liberty, they're our responsibility.
Correct.
And by the same token, protecting those people that have been victims of crime and violence.
Right, right, absolutely, but I mean, it's something.
Very serious, that's our number one.
Yeah, it's something to look at, though, but I, again, my, my, I'm just saying, from my experience, generally, it's better to do capital investment upfront. It just usually is, because if you go out, if you stretch it out over 10 years, it just, you just, it, it's a, it's a, there's all these costs that you don't understand that come back to creep in and cost you more money over time.
Inflation.
It's not just, I'm, I'm just, from a production standpoint, there, like, there's a, there's a machine that I wanna buy that's gonna do something, right? And that machine costs a million and a half dollars, let's just say, and it's gonna save me $2 a missile. You know, and everybody's like, oh my God, we spent all that money safe, but if I'm building 22,000 missiles in 10 years, you know, having a human at, at $200 an hour assembling that missile, that's the total cost, let's say, of putting it together. That, I, I lose $4 million over that same amount of time, and if I just spent the million and a half, I basically saved 3 million bucks. That's the point I'm trying to make, somebody's gotta look at that. I have, when I go and ask for a capital investment, that's, I have to build that, that chart, the ROI chart, and explain why I wanna spend this money and get a loan with what we call cost of money. We have to go borrow the money, and I have to calculate all that in there, and I have this awesome finance person that does that for me, because I, I can't do all that stuff. But they, they basically build this chart and say, okay, if I buy the machine, this is what it's gonna save me over time. If I don't buy the machine, this is what it's gonna cost me over time, and that's what I'm getting at. So if you build the jail, borrow the money and bond, this is what's gonna cost us, and if you don't build the jail over time, this is what it's gonna cost us. And I guarantee you, 99% of the time, it's gonna be cheaper to build a jail and pay for it over time. I'm just saying, that's just my two cents. If you wanna look at the numbers, and I, I don't think there's anything wrong with looking at it, we could do that, we'll get Ms. Chin there.
Ms. Gibbon, what do you understand to be the, the gist of what we're talking about today as far as upcoming work session items?
Well, I think from an upcoming budget work session, we'll talk, we'll have more information on PSPRS than the county's current position, and how the board wants to address the PSPRS liability. And the discussion regarding the jail, I think, is important for us to take back to Chin Planning so that they can be more prepared for the work session on Tuesday.
Okay.
And then the other work session we have is the discussion and possible direction regarding Trace Alamos Community Alliance concerns. So we'll have members from the Trace Alamos Community Alliance here to speak to the board about their concerns.
Let me, let me bring that up to Ms. Gomez and Mr. Crosby. So this is a neighborhood association in my district that has a bunch of issues and concerns, and they feel that they're not being adequately addressed, or they're not being focused on enough. So they, they would like to present those concerns to the board in a work session, and then we would have staff there to either respond or answer, or set up a subsequent work session for staff to respond related to that. But it, it implies all sorts of stuff, it's zoning, and road maintenance, and water issues, and all sorts of stuff that they, they said that are this cascading effect of things that occurred, and they just wanna have a discussion on that. So that's what that's about.
That sounds good, I mean, it actually sounds like something we should do in every district.
Yes, yes, and that, I just refer to the First Amendment. You have a right to, to freedom of speech, free press, freedom of religion, and freedom to assemble, and the last part is to address your, in your government for redress of grievances, right? So that, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about, that beautiful document that those guys wrote 150-something years ago, you know, has a lot of good stuff in it, good nuggets. So if, if the people wanna address their government, I think they should be given the opportunity. So if you got folks in your district that would, would like to do the same thing, that's perfectly fine. You know, that's what we'll schedule for a work session, and then whatever comes in that, we then will decide whether or not we wanna put it on the agenda for a regular session or not, or not. So maybe the staff can handle it without us, and say, okay, we'll go deal with it, and we don't need to put it on the agenda, or if the board wants to formalize it, then we'll have that discussion.
Okay, with regard to this slide, which was like the modified bell curve, you don't need to go back to it, but for my, for my colleagues, should we have, I said, we should have the Finance Director recreate as an update. And they said, the Finance Director should recreate this, this bottom chart, which has to do with our incorporated cities and their PSPRS debts, and we should.
We can bring that in.
We can do that, okay? So I'm gonna give that to you.
So I'll go ahead.
That's true, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
But it'll be the Budget Manager, just to clarify.
But wait, there's more.
Oh no, there's more.
Review, review the Sheriff's Office and Jail Finance, and we should place all.
But we, we set, we, we set up a work session.
We are doing a work session for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, April 8th.
Yep.
Our, our team is working on putting together that information for the presentation.
That takes care of my stuff, thank you very much for your indulgence and.
No, no, the PSPRS thing is a big thing, again, I can, like I said, maybe we needed to have, part of that discussion is a strategy on how, and I get your point, that again, we, in government, tends to reward stupid. That was always my problem in the legislature, we, the people that do the right thing.
Get punished.
Get punished, the people that do the wrong thing end up getting rewarded, it's, it's just a sad reality. But the, the fact is that, you know, the taxpayers are on the hook here, and the fact that that money is not invested, because it isn't in the account to be invested, because it hasn't been paid into that account, the return on that investment is lower, so it hurts the fund altogether, and those retirees, as they, like this lieutenant over here is about to retire, right? That jeopardizes that long-term retirement, because that money isn't being invested, and if you have more to invest, the rate of return, 6%, 7%, 8%, that generates a lot more money, and I could see that in my own 401K that I got right now. The more money I keep putting in there, the bigger, bigger, bigger my monthly chunks of money grows, right? Because the month, the, the dollars that's invested is bigger, so the return is bigger, the net return is bigger. So PSPRS is not taking advantage of that right now, because that money is not there, it is underfunded. And so, in the long term, those guys are gonna suffer, right? And I get your point, you're punishing the cities that did the right thing, but in the end, it's the guys in the system that are not getting the adequate funding to maintain those guys. And in the long run, the taxpayers have to pay the difference, because it's a defined benefit that they get no matter what. So if that pension fund goes bankrupt, which right now it will, that chart.
No, not really, because, not unless the county goes bankrupt.
Well, well, no, 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 that's what I'm saying, we're paying, we have to pay, that's, the taxpayers, that's what I'm getting at. If you have that money in the account, and that money, and that money is being invested, that generated return covers that cost. That's what I'm getting at, and if that money's not in there, then yes, the taxpayers have to pick up the difference. And that's why, maybe it's better, and I know you don't like to hear this, but the bailout word, but maybe it's better to get the legislature involved, and, and like I said, instead of them $900 million sitting there trying to figure out how they can, you know, sweeten the pot for various members to vote for the budget, maybe they should consider paying down that pension liability. Yes, it does screw over.
They're gonna do the states first.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, and, and so in terms of economic development, we're talking about these huge pension liabilities, no matter what the liability is, when you're on the hook for it, then that is a drain on the economy that the taxpayers have to pay, which is the opposite of economic development.
Agreed, I, I got you, but I mean, something's gotta be done with it, you know, I, 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 I get you. But I'm just looking at it, if the money was in the fund, the impact of the taxpayers downstream is minimal. If the money's not in the fund, then you got the taxpayers liable for paying the difference, which is a problem. Because then, you're right, then we can't do economic development, because we gotta keep the taxes high to pay for the pension liability. People don't have any money to invest.
They won't move here.
They won't move here, I know.
At some point, at some point, I got you.
All right, anything else, final comments before we adjourn?
Um, just one question, Sharon, do we have a session on the Douglas Port of Entry? Because I know now that, I guess, there's 64 million in ADAT's five-year plan for it, which means I'd like to find out exactly what's the number we have to. 20 million, I think, that's just to build the road, the connector road. So wait for 27.
Yes, supervisor Gomez, I'm working, I'm working to pull those stakeholders together. I've also asked ADOT for a more condensed uh listing of the funding and the various sources of that funding, because I expressed that it is getting confusing to keep it all straight. So they're working on that, and I'm working on schedules with the various stakeholders.
And also, CGO, I guess, has some, I I'll send you the gentleman's name that I met, but they're also somehow involved in it in the transportation aspect some way. So they might be someone, I'd just like to get as many people who have even a small piece of it sitting at the tables, we all speak at the same time.
Okay, I'll add them to the.
All right.
And it, and the the CCOM thing we got going, right? You got the CCOM work session with the briefing for?
Yes, so the loan employee agreement is, we've received it from the city, and I'm having discussions with the director and attorneys to make sure I understand it, and we'll bring it to the board to discuss as an agenda item.
In a work session?
Um, we can do.
I would like her to talk to us, and I'd like our HR director to explain the HR impacts as well. That, that negotiation.
Okay.
It kind of didn't work out the way it was supposed to work out.
I understand. All right.
A lot of the, the employees that were supposed to come over decided not to come over, and that, um, the December thirty first.
Wasn't that the meeting that was closed and nobody saw?
That the video went out, when they voted for that, it didn't quite work out the way that that was planned. That's the.
And then we pay them, right? Excuse me, Chairman Antoni, don't we end up paying the city back for having them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Through CCOM, so we're trying, I'm, that's what I'm working.
That's what she's going to look at, and then come talk to.
I have a lot of questions, myself.
Yeah. So anyways, we'll get more info on that. So it'll be, it'll be an interesting topic for discussion. That's for sure.
Yeah.
All right. I don't have anything else, Tom. Kathleen, anything?
Um, no, maybe I'll just mention that the mayor from Douglas, Jose Grijalva, and I are going to go up to the state legislature next Wednesday and meet with Galen and DS and I don't know who else about the port of entry, so.
Okay.
FYI.
All right. Well, that's all I got. Let's uh, let's call it a day. We're adjourned.
All right.